... meeting to order, December 17th, Planning Commission Board of Zoning Appeals meeting. Start the roll call on my right, please.
Lynn Heath.
Eric Peterson.
Bill Schnaber.
Gary Israel.
Alex Zarchen.
Okay. Approval of minutes from the November 19th meeting. Everybody had a chance to go through that?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes from our November 19th, 2019, Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals.
I have a motion to approve.
I'll second it. Aye, Lynn Heath, for a second.
And a second on that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Communications. Les, anything from staff?
Nothing new. You'll notice in the building permit activity report that as of the 10th, we had 77 single-family residential house permits and 32 two-family house permits. So, we're on a kind of the new normal path around 80 single-family and 30 to 40 multifamily.
It's nice to see a lot of activity going on in town, both residential and commercial. Okay. This time, I need to, we need to recess the Planning Commission and convene the Board of Zoning Appeals. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make that motion.
We have a motion, second.
I'll second it.
And a second, by Lynn Heath. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Brings us to item number five, BZA-V 2019-04. Public hearing on an application for variance of Article 7-100.15a2 of the zoning regulations on property generally located at 1215 North Main Street, Andover, Kansas. Subject property is in an area with larger lots and many have oversized accessory structures. Staff knows of no reason not to grant the variance pending the outcome of the public hearing. Okay. Okay, I've got a few things to start with here. I'd like to welcome you to the meeting this evening. It's important that you present any facts or views that you have as evidence at this hearing so that findings can be made for the decision of this board. In order to grant a variance, five specific written findings of fact must all be met according to the state statutes and the city zoning regulations. This board is authorized by state statutes to make a decision appealable only to district court and not to the governing body. After our zoning administrator provides us with some information, I will call upon the applicant and then we will hear from any other interested parties. Once all have been heard, the applicant will have an opportunity for final comments. The board will close the hearing to further public comments and will then consider the decision during which time they may direct questions to the applicant, the public, or staff. You should be aware that the board can require such conditions to be attached to the premises benefited by the variance as may be necessary to comply with the standards set out in Article 11.106. These are to reduce any potentially injurious effect of such variance upon other property in the neighborhood and to carry out the general purpose and intent of these regulations. Failure to comply with any of the conditions attached to a zoning permit for variance shall constitute a violation of the regulations. You should also be fully aware that if the applicant chooses to describe various features of their development plans, the city can only enforce those provisions which are covered in zoning and other city codes. Anyone wishing to speak must be recognized by the chairperson, give their name and address. Please use the podium here on the right. Speak clearly so that our comments can be recorded for inclusion into our minutes. Are there any disqualifications? No.
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 Official notice for this hearing was published in the Butler County Times Gazette on November 23rd, 2019, and notices were mailed to the applicant and 16 real property owners of record in the area of notification on November 19th, 2019. The record shows that at least 20 days have elapsed between the publication and mailing dates and the hearing date. Unless there is evidence to the contrary from anyone present, I will declare that proper notification has been given. Has there been any ex parte communication among the board?
No.
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 At this time, I now call upon Les Mangus to offer any information on this case that he can.
This is a pretty typical application for a variance of the bulk regulations for an accessory structure. You all have processed many of these applications. This is in a neighborhood that has many larger structures because the lots are quite large. There are some lots in this area that are as big as 10 acres. So, we've met with the applicant. He's provided a site plan for how he plans to lay the building on there. And Gary, you had asked earlier about the side setback. The side setback is the required eight feet. In this case, the seven-foot dimension you see there would be considered the rear yard because the house faces to the right of the sheet, Main Street. That's a minimum setback of five feet from the rear lot line.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, what confused me on that, too, was...
Yeah, it's a little confusing. It's the way it shows on the picture, the bottom of the sheet is not the street.
Yeah.
It's actually kind of a side-load garage today.
Well, and the house next to it, it's his side yard.
Yes.
That's what, that's what...
Right. There's, there are three legal non-conforming lots there that are served by one driveway.
Okay. Okay, any questions for Les from commission?
No.
No.
I think he answered.
At this time, I would welcome the applicant to come up and tell us, yes, over here at the podium, please, your name and address. If you can add anything to the request here, go right ahead.
I don't have much to add to it.
Okay. What is the height? Is this a, the height of the building going to be?
I don't know what the total height is. They're gonna have, what, 11-foot wall, I think. 10-foot or 11-foot, he said. Not sure what the total height of it'll be.
You're gonna have a...
I think he said 14-foot at the peak, at the peak of the roof.
Pitched roof, obvious pitched roof?
Yes.
What size door are you gonna have in the front? Is that, that a hill?
Well, I'm gonna have a double door on the front, well, what I call the front.
Okay.
Same as my garage door that I already have.
That's gonna be a 10-foot?
And then there'll be another door on the side, so...
That's gonna be a 10-foot door, for the garage door or at a...
Uh, 9-foot.
9-foot, okay.
Or, no, I think 8-foot. 8-foot. Yeah, 'cause I have 7-foot on my other door and I needed a little bit more than that, so...
Well, normally when they put, make it that tall, they wanna, they're gonna put in a 10-foot door or something like that.
I don't think he's going that big. I can't remember.
He's provided a set of plans here. It looks like it would be 15 feet 5 to the peak.
To the peak. Oh, okay.
And the sidewall dimensions 11.6.
That's what I was thinking. It might be a 10-foot door, it's tall.
Right. Looks like it provides 10.6 inside clearance.
Okay.
What do you, what do you expect the exterior of the building to look like? Materials, color, et cetera?
It's gonna be metal siding and it's kind of off-white color, same as my house.
Same as the house, right?
Right.
Good, good.
So, that's, the question that I would have, then, is, on the application, it says increase building size, so is this an add-on directly off of the building or is this a separate standalone structure?
It's a separate structure.
Okay.
Originally, I wanted to attach it, but they decided that was probably not the best way to go, so...
Okay, so it'll be its own separate structure from the main house, then? Okay.
It will be five feet off of the other garage, basically.
Okay, I see that note now, then. That's what that is. Okay. Is there any additional pavement or is it gonna, are you gonna increase the parking area in front?
I'm gonna put a little piece of concrete in front of the door, I mean, so I have a little bit of an entryway there.
Okay.
But, and on the side door, on the back, basically it's the back of my other garage, I wanna put in like 15-foot wide strip of concrete there all the way across the back of the garage. So that there'll be an approach up to the side door on the garage there.
Any exterior lighting out of the norm on this?
Yeah.
Okay. I have nothing more, Mr. Chairman. No, sir? Anything?
Nope. I'd answer. No questions, I have.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone from the public at this time? Okay. Any letters, communications of any kind from anyone? Okay.
All right. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would have one more question for the applicant since we don't have anybody from the public. Have you talked to any of your neighbors about your building? They aware of it? Any concerns? Anybody say anything yet?
Well, there's a lady that lives clear at the back end of the side room. I'm sorry.
If you don't mind, come into the podium, please.
There's a little old lady that lives clear at the back, that dirt road that goes down the side there, and she stopped and asked me about it 'cause she thought somebody was building a big storage building or something for, you know, people to store stuff in.
Yeah.
And I, I explained to her what it was. Oh, that's good, no problem. And then my direct neighbor right behind me there on the dirt road, he knew about it for quite a while now 'cause I've been talking to him about it and he doesn't have any problem with it. And then the one to the north of me, he's not worried about it at all. He's, he's got three big buildings out behind his house, so...
Yeah. He has a large lot.
Yeah, he's got a big lot. He wants to sell it to me for that amount of it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
No problem.
At this time, if there are further questions, then I'm going to close the public portion of the hearing. There will be no further public comments unless the board wishes to ask questions to clarify information. We are now going to deliberate the request to determine whether the evidence presented supports the conclusions of the required findings of fact. The board will now consider the criteria provided for evaluation. And we'll start... This report has been prepared by the zoning administrator to assist the Board of Zoning Appeals to determine their findings from the evidence presented at the hearing so as to base their decisions for a variance on the required five findings found in subsection 11.106.2 of the zoning regulations. The board may grant a request upon specific written findings of fact when all five conditions, as required by state statutes, are found to exist. The responses provided need to be evaluated with the evidence and reworded as necessary to reflect the Board of Zoning Appeals' considered opinion. Conditions attached to the motion, if any, should be carefully worded to provide instructions to the applicant and facilitate enforcement by the zoning administrator. Number one, physical surroundings, shape, or topography of the property would result in a practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience for the owner, lesssee, or occupant. Staff, the subject lot is .37 acres, nearly twice the minimum lot area required, which provides a substantial area for accessory structures while remaining below the zoning district's maximum allowable lot coverage limit of 30 percent. Additionally, the large lot size allows for adequate separation from existing and proposed structures to adjoining properties and public streets.
Concur.
Yes. Two, granting the variance will result in material detriment or injury to other property or improvements in the neighborhood. Staff, no detriment and/or injury to other property or improvements is anticipated.
Concur.
Three, granting the variance will result in an inadequate supply of light or air to adjacent property, substantially increased traffic congestion, increased fire risk, or substantially diminished property values in the neighborhood. Staff, the subject lot is .37 acres, nearly twice the minimum lot area required, which provides a substantial area of accessory structures while remaining below the zoning district's maximum allowable lot coverage limit of 30 percent. Additionally, the large lot size allows for adequate separation from existing and proposed structures to adjoining properties and public streets.
Concur.
Four, the request for a variance is not based exclusively on a desire of the owner, lesssee, occupant, or applicant to make more money out of the property. Staff, the applicant has declared the intended use to be for personal hobbies as an accessory residential use.
Concur.
Okay, moving on. Specific conditions to be met. One, the requested variance arises from a condition unique to the property in question which is not ordinarily found in the same zoning district and which was not created by any action of the property owner or the applicant. Staff, again, subject lot is .37 acres, nearly twice the minimum lot area required, which provides a substantial area for accessory structures while remaining below the zoning district's maximum allowable lot coverage limit of 30 percent. Additionally, the large lot size allows for adequate separation from existing and proposed structures to adjoining properties and public streets.
Concur.
Two, strict application of the provisions of these zoning regulations would result in unnecessary hardship for the owner, lesssee, or occupant of the land or structures. Again, lot is .37 acres, nearly twice the minimum lot area required, which does provide a substantial area for accessory structures while remaining below the zoning district's maximum allowable lot coverage limit of 30 percent. Additionally, the large lot size allows for adequate separation from existing and proposed structures to adjoining properties and public streets.
Concur.
Two, strict application of the provisions of these zoning regulations would result in unnecessary hardship for the owner, lesssee, or occupant of the land or structures. Again, lot is .37 acres, nearly twice the minimum lot area required, which does provide a substantial area for accessory structures while remaining below the zoning district's maximum allowable lot coverage limit of 30 percent.
Concur.
Three, granting the variance will not adversely affect the rights of adjacent property owners or residents. Again, lot is .37 acres, nearly twice the minimum lot area required, providing a substantial area for accessory structures while remaining below the zoning district's maximum allowable lot coverage limit of 30 percent. Adequate space remains for separation from nearby residents.
Concur.
Four, requested variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, or general welfare. Staff, the intent of lot coverage maximum is to promote health, safety, and general welfare of residents. The lot is .37 acres, nearly twice the minimum lot area required, providing a substantial area for accessory structures while still remaining below the zoning district's maximum allowable lot coverage limit of 30 percent.
Concur.
And five, the requested variance will not be opposed to the general spirit and intent of these zoning regulations. The intent of bulk regulations are to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of residents. The lot is .37 acres, nearly twice the minimum lot area required, providing a substantial area for accessory structures while remaining below the zoning district's maximum allowable lot coverage limit of 30 percent.
Concur.
Okay. Any further comments, additions we need to make?
Don't believe so, Mr. Chairman.
No, sir.
Gentlemen?
No.
Okay, at this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve, modify, and approve, disapprove, or to table the discussion.
Well, Mr. Chairman, after having considered the evidence at the hearing and determined that the findings of the fact have been found to exist that support all five conditions set out in subsection 11-106.2 of the zoning regulations and KSA 12-759E, I Gary Israel move that the chairperson be authorized to sign a resolution granting the variance for case number BZA-V-2019-04 as requested.
I have a motion to approve?
I'm sorry, I Lynn Heath will second the motion.
And we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Okay. Close remark, a resolution will be prepared and made available to the applicant as soon as reasonably possible, but no later than January 31st, 2020. If anyone is aggrieved by this decision, a further appeal can be made to the district court to determine its reasonableness within 30 days after the resolution is signed and filed with the zoning administrator. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to adjourn the Board of Zoning Appeals and reconvene the Planning Commission.
I have a motion to adjourn?
Aye, Eric Peterson, second that motion.
And we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Item number six, VA 2019-03, public hearing and recommendation on a petition for vacation of a public street right-of-way generally located at 308 North Andover Road, Andover, Kansas. Subject of the vacation is a dedication that was filed and recorded with an error in the legal description. Property owner has asked that the city clean up the error. Okay. Les?
I found this error when I was working on acquisitions of right-of-ways and easements for the new Andover Road bicycle pedestrian path. The dedication from back in the early 1990s was supposed to be measured from the lot lines, but for some reason, it was measured as though it was from the center of the street, only from the lot line, so it ended up with a five-foot easement that's way out in the middle of this lot, almost to the front door of the business. So, in negotiations with the owner for the easements for the bike ped project, he asked that we remove that error.
Okay. How many years would it take us to find that, 20?
About 25 years.
Okay. Pretty cut and dry, gentlemen.
Yep.
Questions?
I imagine we look around and we might find some more of these.
We're too hard, man.
Was I on the board, then?
They've been close, yeah.
So, then I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I, Eric Peterson, make a motion that we approve the case number VA-2019-03 in the matter of the vacation of public street right-of-way generally located at 308 North Andover Road as presented at tonight's meeting.
We have a motion to approve?
I Gary Israel, second motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, brings us to item number seven, our calendar for 2020. I looked at the dates, they look, as far as the planning and subdivision committee meeting dates, they look to be good.
As did I. I agree.
Gee, this, this year, in 2020, I'll be here 40 years. Andover was a small town when I moved here.
Yeah, I think it'll be a lot bigger when you do leave eventually.
It's already, yeah. Yeah, holy mackerel.
All right, then.
Well, Mr. Chairman, the only date that I would question would be the Planning Commission and Board of Z, Board of Zoning Appeals for December 22nd, 2020. Is that getting a little close for Christmas? Would people be out on Christmas vacation? Would it leave us with not having enough people for a quorum?
Legitimate question?
I don't have any plans, but I just wonder, you know?
We don't have many options, do we?
The only option would be to publish a different date. The problem we have with that is, looking at the calendar...
'Cause the second Tuesday is the 8th for December, and then the third Tuesday would be the 15th, 'cause December 1st would be December, would be a Tuesday as well.
You're absolutely correct.
Correct. Yeah.
Keep us on our toes.
There you go. Okay, so...
And Gary caught it? Alec caught it.
Gary brought up the question.
What date should it be, then?
Should be 8th for the subdivision and then the 15th for the planning.
Right. 8th, instead of 22nd, the 8th.
And then that would alleviate some of that concern, then?
Yes.
That would, totally. Give us time there.
I don't know how that affects all, everything else, Steve.
That actually puts it in line because in that...
15 to 8.
The first would be subdivision committee, the eighth, excuse me, first would be site plan committee, the eighth would be subdivision committee and city council.
Right.
15th, planning commission. No meeting on the 22nd, and presumably the council would meet for the last meeting of the year on the 29th. It's rare that we stumble into that five Tuesday month.
Right.
Around the holiday.
Whether good or bad.
Well, and Lance, your little trick will now assure that we look at everything real closely and don't take... Well done.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the 2020 minutes calendar of the City of Andover Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals with the correction that the subdivision committee meeting will be December 8th, 2020, and Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals would be December 15th, 2020.
I have a motion to approve the calendar for 2020 with the two changes as such. Do I have a second?
Aye, Alex Zarchen will second that motion.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It passes unanimously.
Excellent.
Item number eight, any member items? Gentlemen?
I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and a Happy Holiday, depending on how you're celebrating.
There you go.
Yep. I hope you have the opportunity to spend time with family, friends, and if you can, get a chance to volunteer somewhere.
That's right. It's a good idea. Alright then.
I concur. Thank you.
Looking for a motion to adjourn?
I, Gary Israel, make the motion to adjourn.
Aye, Eric Peterson, second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn this evening's meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Gentlemen, thank you. Happy holidays.
Same to you.